Good evening. Let's call to the municipal city council, March 9th, 2020. We please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Babe, could you call the wall, please?
Mr. Havens?
Here.
Dr. Van Baldheisen?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Schwalter?
Here. Has everyone looked at the minutes of February 24th, 2020, our last meeting? Does anyone have any corrections or additions?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
See, none. The minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. First up is the office for Thad Camp, and he is not here.
Yeah. I don't know where he is.
Okay.
Maybe he sneaks in late.
Yeah.
We will set that up later time if something we need to. And then next up is the service department and a report by Service Director Ryan Paisley.
This is the wrong one. Fire's coming up, sorry. Clicked on the wrong one.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's my second time doing this, and if there's anything you guys want to see or you don't care to see, just let me know, and I'll make it better for next year. But I'd kind of put our year stats, what we do, water production, and everything together for you. So, water production, we pumped 291 million gallons, and we billed 265 million gallons, which is a 9% unmetered, which EPA thinks it's a problem if you're under 20, or over 20. Last year, we were 14%. So this year, we wasted less water, and that's primarily because of how we flush the fire hydrants. Last year, we flushed them pretty good because it's been a while since they were flushed properly. So we really flushed them good. This year, we kind of backed off a little bit because the water's not stirred up as Okay, snow removal. We had, in snow removal, I kind of do for the season and not the year, because it's kind of broke up. If you do it that way, it's easier to keep track. 14 snow events, and it was just under 30 inches of snow we had in 2019. Well, a lot of it was actually in late 2018. 4,725 miles, 448 tons of salt used, 409 labor hours. So that kind of gives you an idea. I mean, we're small, but we still keep our streets clean, so. Okay, so, water system maintenance and repairs. We replaced 13 new hydrants last year, and I've already got 13 new ones sitting on our lot ready for this year. Thank you for that, for approving that. We had 14 water main breaks. Most of them, we don't have to shut down and issue boil advisories. We try to work them if they're safe enough to work. We use our trench box. We pump them out good. We haven't had any problems with that. We flush hydrants in October. We have right around 600. I don't have an exact number, just because of the new developments going in. But, yeah, we have 13 more to replace this year.
Wow.
We have 600 hydrants?
Yes, on our system.
And unless it's that many?
Right. So, yeah, replacing 13 a year is pretty important, especially for the old town.
If I may, Ryan, what's the expected life of a hydrant?
We have some, honestly, from the 50s. As long as you can get parts for them and we can rebuild them, that's really the key. And like the Mueller's, which are real common, they're made the same today as they were in the 70s. Same part numbers and everything when you replace them. So you can do, you know, as long as you can rebuild them. If they get hit, a lot of times, like the vehicle hits them, they're not worth spending the, buying the parts for them. It just costs too much, you may as well replace it.
Understand. And if I may, just humor me, what does a new hydrant cost if you're buying a new one?
Depending on how deep the berry is, right around 2,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, our street program. Last year, we milled and paved Dane Lane, Dane Court, Kim Court, Firebird, Shadow Wood, and Hillcrest. And this year, we have on the plan Bellmead, which has taken up half of the budget, just because it's such a long street. We have Fowler, Lindley, Justin Court, and just a little section of Possum Run right at the court.
Is, you think we're keeping up?
I think so. Yeah, for sure. I mean, I'll let you know if we're not. But it's nice to have that little bit of extra tax, gas tax money. You know, the $50,000, that really helps. So we'll keep that going, hopefully.
Takes a little less maintenance, too, when you have a little bit of road.
Sure. Yeah, sure.
Is our infrastructure pretty solid? I mean, it seems like we've been up on top of it, because I'm seeing about Dayton's going to put a lot of money into their water system, and I worry about that. And I've seen a couple of condominium association have private drives in Centerville. They've done this, you know, paving, it's been big assessments, and they've never done anything. We've kept up on ours, I think, every year for the last 15 years, about $150,000 a year. It seems like that's worse than with the fire hydrants, and the piping's relatively good.
Yeah.
With the oldest section being replaced last year, so.
Right. I mean, there's always room for improvement. You know, we could always go back to, like, back in the early 2000s, late 90s, early 2000s, we did the micro-surfacing on streets, which it's not really an overlay, it's more of a crack seal, and then a emulsion with gravel over top, and it looks real nice. Some can't even tell it's not a new street. So if we ever got to the point where all these streets are catching up, we could always go back to that and not mill and pave.
Okay.
Is that what they call slurries?
Yes, slurries.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's tough stuff. You know, you try to dig through it, pothole-ing or something, and it's sticky stuff. It really, it's like a Band-Aid, but it's good.
Yeah. My recollection is Bellevue seems to be in pretty good shape. Maybe I didn't walk the entire thing, but.
Bellmead?
Bellmead.
Bellmead, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Could it go another year?
Quite honestly, I think that's the worst street we have.
Okay.
It's got heaps in it, because it's a concrete street underneath an asphalt street. So the concrete moves differently from the asphalt, and every crease, there's a little hump. And then it just starts pothole-ing right on that crease. And we have, we have, over the years, put it off because it's a, it costs 75,000 just for that street. So it's taken up a lot, but I think it's past due.
I appreciate that.
Sure. Okay, work orders. I have a list of, just to let you know what kind of work orders come through. Utility locates, we get them every day. I've got two of them on my email since I left today. 1,721 locate requests. Anyone doing anything has to call and have the utilities marked. And it seems like we're getting more and more and more of these. And we have one guy that sometimes he's locating, that's what he does for eight hours, especially in the springtime right now.
Now, is it true, if you call Oops?
Yes.
They don't contact you? You, we have to contact you on our own, right?
Oops contacts whoever's a member of Oops, which we are.
You are now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there's a couple companies, like DPNL, they mark their own. So there's an Oops contractor that'll come out and mark, like, phone, gas, and any communication line, fiber. But that's kind of misleading, because you're also waiting for, you have to wait for it to clear, which is 48 hours unless it's an emergency, which, when we have water main breaks or service leaks, you know, then we have two hours. They have to be there within two hours. But, yeah, there's a lot of jobs out there for marking.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, water service work orders. These are finals, leak checks, high bills, 1,395 water service work orders. So, and that doesn't include us. Every year, since we don't read meters in the meter pits, we don't open them, we go to every meter pit and open and inspect, just to make sure there's not a slow leak or something that looks like it's about to leak. So we have done that for the year already. We started back in December and finished in January. So that's not included in these almost 1,400 water work orders. And there's probably 2,500 or 3,000 meter pits.
What?
Yeah. Let's see here. Okay, general work orders. Whether it's helping the garden club, whether it's putting up flags, whether it's 1,102 of those. So every day, we work on a work order system, so we keep track of who does what, when, and, I mean, we're pretty organized that way. That way, we can go back and say, okay, who did this? Well, I can go back and tell you who did that. You know, and that includes building maintenance, vehicle maintenance, mowing, tree trimming, drainage checks. You know, when we get heavy rains, you know, we're in a flood zone down here, we check it throughout the whole entire rain, especially during leaf season. It'll plug a drain real quick. And our staff, we, you know, we're a water classification one for EPA, and we have five guys that hold that license, and then one guy that holds it two. I went out and got my two when there was merger study talk, just in case our water system were to get bigger, there would be someone here that would be able to operate it. That's the reason I did that. And that's really all I have, if you have any questions.
Yeah, just for my information, I'm assuming when you say water supply one, and then you talk about two, and then merging, that that kind of deals with size, complexity, amount?
Yes. And it's kind of a point system. It's not necessarily just size, but if we were to start softening water or something like that, that our point rating would go up, and the EPA may require us to be a two.
Okay.
And then the big jump would be a three, and that's like the city of Xenia, there are three.
Okay.
Green County, there are four. It just depends on a lot of different ways of how you treat the water and the size of it, and how many you serve. But I would like to thank Council for our support, and we hope we're doing a good job for you.
Is there anything you need? Or would like?
I'm happy with what we got.
You're easy.
I am happy with what we got.
Appreciate that.
Ryan, give a few minutes to talk about testing the wells. We're talking about the well field right now, the five or four wells we're not using. What kind of processes that I just don't know much about? I know, I don't think we've tested those wells, and this is the area they're talking about for the Belbrook Mountain Run. Just want to see if you had any insights, and you're not getting a lot of detail.
No, that's fine. We haven't tested since 2000.
Okay.
And I think it was, they were testing positive for bacteria and E. coli. We never was able to get a good test off, so the city, under Dave Hamilton, purchased some land behind the golf park back here and put in two production wells. And since then, there hasn't been a reason to, you know, retest those to see if they would be good protection wells, because we quite simply don't need that capacity. But it would be good to keep those to monitor, just because you have industry on Ferry Road, and those are in a well-filled protection area, which is my concern. So, yeah, we could certainly test from them. I would have to get a well driller in here to do it properly, to put pumps and motors down in the ground and to test them. It's not something I can, we can physically do.
So conceivably, we could use those wells someday if we had to. I mean, 20 years is a long time.
We could. And my understanding is, Green County, they have a, either a 60 or a 66-inch sewer main that is pretty close to there, and we believe that that was where there was leaching. I believe they have relined that several years ago. But like I say, there hasn't been a reason to test them, because that just costs money. I don't know how much it costs, but I can certainly find out.
It's nice to have, you know, if something would happen to the primary well field, it's nice to be able to at least possibly have an alternate source.
Sure, sure. Yeah, the redundancy.
We rely on our water department. Serve a lot of people.
Good deal.
It's our biggest asset.
We're getting close to 10,000 that we serve, so.
Yeah, it's our biggest asset.
Are customers in the city and in the township? Do everybody in Centerville, or?
No, we do, okay, yes, to answer your question. There's about 90 homes in, off of Locklayman.
Yeah, we won't fight down there?
Yes. And, but those are, they're not in Washington Township or Centerville, but there's a fine line to it.
Really, just two houses on Belbrook, and they give the rest of them or something else?
Yeah, yeah. It's just how the boundary is worked out, yeah. But we don't bill anything to anyone but our residents that are in Sugar Creek Township or Belbrook.
The Oops calls, is there any revenue generation up there?
No, actually, we pay to do it, but it protects us. Yeah, I mean, we don't get money for it, we pay money for it. But it protects our infrastructure, so.
Now, you just got a mapping system last year, right?
That's going to start this year.
That's going to start this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we have lead mapping, but, yeah, the GIS stuff is going to start this year. In fact, we have a meeting, I believe, tomorrow on it.
So that should help you out?
Absolutely.
Good.
Absolutely.
How will that help you out?
Well, everything will be, have latlongs to it, water valves, hydrants, even storm basins, manholes, we're going to do it all. Even signs, street signs, we'll have it all on a map, and we can layer the map to show certain things at certain times.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be nice.
You just have to make the calls and paint them lines and yard.
Yes. Oh, yes, yeah, for sure.
Just should go quicker, because you don't know exactly where it's at?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's enough, there's enough of us that know, I mean, I can look at one and say, okay, the water main's on that side of the road, and since we've dug it up before, there's not any gas, there's not any sanitary clothes. So we kind of have an idea just from experience, but that will definitely help us.
And can I ask, the new system, do you have to populate it yourself?
I don't know a whole lot about it. Thankfully, Jessica from Green County, she does, and she'll be able to help. And we had a start, we kind of have a start, because we had an asset management company come in and do some of it for us. So, you know, the skeleton is there. We're just going to build off of it.
I did see a presentation on it in Miami Valley Conference I went to. You can even get, like, citizens involved to train them, and volunteer groups, things like that, remote handhelds.
Yep. I think you can even do it from your smartphone, so.
Wow.
So when we have a little bit of downtime with the guys, I'll send them out there to get latlongs.
I just got a last comment. Green County bought an aquifer, and they're talking about softening water. And we've talked about softening water.
Yeah.
Has there been any changes where it's cheap?
No. I think back in '09, or right before we put the water plant in, the clear wells and the pumps, it seems like it was right around $3 million to change over to ion exchange soften, and then you have that everyday ongoing cost of salt and manpower. And I would guess 70 to 80% of the residents have softeners anyway, and they would still soften, they would still use it, because we couldn't soften to zero. You have to bypass, and so they would still have some hardness coming to the house, so they would still soften.
You don't want to see them anyway.
So it'd be cheap for us to buy the softeners.
There you go.
Just about wood, yeah.
Any other questions, Council?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, good report. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tonight, we have no public hearings, but we do have, we have two introductions. Introduction of Ordinance Number 2020-3, Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook, Ohio, Ordinance Number 2020-3. An ordinance by Belbrook City Council repealing old section 1060.05, service charges of the Belbrook Municipal Code and enacting a new section 1060.05, service charges to discontinue the low-volume service program established by Ordinance Number 2011-12. Whereas the City of Belbrook established a low-volume service program for refuse collection with Ordinance 2011-12, which ordinance was codified in section 1060.05 of the Belbrook Municipal Code. And whereas the City of Belbrook had a refuse collection contract with allied waste at the time, ordinance 2011-12 was enacted, which contract enabled the implementation of a low-volume service program. And whereas the low-volume service program was implemented on a trial basis in the year 2012, and whereas the City of Belbrook entered into a contract with Rumke for refuse collection in November 2012, which contract did not provide for the low-volume service program. And whereas, based on the terms of the existing current refuse collection contract, the City of Belbrook and Rumke are unable to effectively and efficiently administer the low-volume service program established by ordinance 2011-12. And whereas the low-volume service program must be discontinued until a contract can be negotiated to include such a program. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, section one, the old section 1060.05 service charges of the Belbrook Municipal Code be hereby is repealed. Section two, a new section 1060.05, service charges in chapter 1060, garbage and rubbish collection and disposal of the Belbrook Municipal Code be and hereby is enacted to read as set forth in exhibit A, which is attached herein to and incorporated herein by reference. Section three is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that any and all deliberations of this council that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including, but not limited to, section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period possible provided by law. That's a lot for the law that's done.
So this was brought up at the last city council meeting and the city manager's update. So basically, what we're doing with this is, it came to our attention when we started digging in, we'd had some customers ask about low-volume service, and we were trying to figure out exactly what that meant, because in our codified ordinances, it just said that these were, these program guidelines were outlined by the city manager, and we couldn't find any, anywhere where those were recorded. So we went back and started digging in old ordinances and minutes and things like that, and we found back in 2011 where all this happened, and we were under allied waste at that time when this was put into place. And so the way that the program was put in place back then, because the question was raised, well, what exactly is low-volume service? And we couldn't figure that out until we went back and we really did some digging. So what the agreed-upon program was, is that customers could have 65-gallon trash cans, and they would only be picked up every other week. So that is not something that carried over to Rumke, because they pick up every week, and they don't monitor who was picked up and who wasn't picked up. So to remedy that, we were just going to go ahead and discontinue it, since it's not really something that we can keep doing, since it wasn't incorporated into our Rumke contract. But everybody that's on it right now is going to stay on it until we can try to get that worked out with the next contract. So that's the long and the short of it. And I did quote it wrong, because when the, I said it was $12 a month, but when the rates went up $1.50, they both went up $1.50. So it's now $13.50 for the low-volume service. And I said it was 12 at the last meeting, so I was corrected by Michaela on that one, so.
I think initially, the rate was 16, and we gave the low-volume service was 12, which was 25%. Then the next contract, we went to $13 for regular service, so I think we just left the low-volume set. And then we have now, what, $15.50 for regular customers, and then $13.50 for low volume?
Doesn't seem like a big difference, but.
No. But it was just really hard when people would call, and they would want to know about the program, because they would talk to their neighbor, and their neighbor would be on it, and we really didn't have a good answer. And then we sat down with Rumke, and we were like, well, we need to do something about this until we can get it formalized in a way that's useful. And that's the intention, is that we establish a low-volume service program with Rumke when the contract renews, and we're able to do that. And they had some really good ideas about how we could do that. So we plan to continue it when we're able to implement a program that we can fully administer properly, so.
Any more discussion, Council? No, Mayor. You have a motion regarding the ordinance 2020-3?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2020-3.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Greenwood to introduce ordinance 2020-3, an ordinance repealing old section 1060.05, service charges of the Belbrook Municipal Code, and enacting new section 1060.05, service charges to discontinue the low-volume service program established by ordinance 2011-12, so seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Baldheisen?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you. Next ordinance, 2020-4, Mrs. Middlestetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2020-4, an ordinance repealing old section 1224.01, fees, and adopting new section 1224.01, fees of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code. Whereas the City of Belbrook outlines the fees associated with subdivisions in the City of Belbrook in section 1224.01, fees of the Belbrook Municipal Code. And whereas section 1224.01C outlines the lot split and lot combination fees, which are currently insufficient, and whereas section 1224.01E currently allows for a refund deposit back to the developer and should be eliminated. And whereas, Planning Board met and discussed the above changes at their February 20th, 2020, meeting. And whereas, the City of Belbrook wishes to repeal and replace section 1224.01 in order to amend lot split, lot combination fees, and eliminate the deposit refund clause. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, section one, that section 1224.01, fees of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code be and is hereby repealed. Section two, a new section 1224.01, fees of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code be enacted to be read as set forth with deletions shown by strike-through and additions shown by italics and underlined. Section 1224.01, fees. The following fees are required under the subdivision regulations for the plating of land in the city. Preliminary filing fee, $200 plus $25 per acre. B, final filing fee, $250 plus $25 per acre. Lot split, lot combination fee, 50 is striked out, and 150 is. Inspection fees. Prior to approval by the Planning Board of a final plat and construction plans, the subdivider shall provide a cash bond in the amount of 6% of the estimated cost of the public improvements, streets, curbs, sidewalks, storm sewers, and water lines, to the finance office. The subdivider's engineer of record shall provide an estimate as to quantities and prices, and if a discrepancy exists between the subdivider and the city engineer's estimates, the inspection deposit will be based on the city engineer's estimate. E, inspection costs. Inspection costs and the cost of subdivision plan review performed under contract by the city shall be charged against the 6% deposit. However, if funds deposited at the time of filing are not sufficient to cover all inspection costs, additional inspection fees shall be required when needed at the discretion of the city manager. F, water and sewage connection fees. All fees for connection to the city water system shall be established in chapter 1242 of this code. All fees for connection to the county sanitary sewer system shall be set by the Green County Department of Sanitary Engineering and paid to that agency. G, failure to pay filing fee. If a filing fee is not paid prior to the initiation of construction, a penalty of 50% of the filing fee shall be added to the fees listed in this section if the project is in full compliance with the zoning code. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Thank you, Elaine.
So this went before Planning Board. This was, as Council knows, it's been talked about with the lot split, lot combination fees, just because we've had several of those. Dr. Van Baldheisen can vouch for this. We've had, especially with one of the subdivisions, we've had the same lots be combined, split, combined, and it takes a lot of staff time, it takes Planning Board time, and then it takes city council time. So there's three different layers to having those occur whenever they happen, and so the $150 is more in line with the actual costs. So they looked at all the different fees, and that was the only one that had changed in terms of fees. And then Jessica had done some research, and we've got, we struck the part about any deposit shall be returned to the developer at the time of the performance bond or letter of credit is released. The six percent, the inspection fees are far above the six percent. So it's, it's an accounting that isn't, it doesn't really do us any good because we know that we're not gonna be refunding anything back. In, in actuality, we're receiving much more. We've got, let's see, we've got Waterford Landings, Highview Terrace, and Redwood right now. So those four, they've exceeded the six percent on all of them. So we do still account for it, but there's, those projects are so large that we're billing out and we're not giving anything back. And I know that Jessica had talked to Green County and I think a few others, and they said that they don't ever refund anything just because of the work and the staff time it takes anyways with just accounting for those things and just managing the, the engineering and inspections and all of the things that go along with that. So that was the thought behind that. So Planning Board did see all of this at their February twentieth meeting and they did approve the changes that were recommended.
Is the six percent cash bond, is that sufficient or should we raise that up too? Or is that pretty much typical?
It's typical, but every project is different and we have some challenging properties in the city. So some are easier than others, but most of them are kinda challenging just because of the topography, so tends to be a little bit higher here.
Should we raise it higher than six percent?
We could, we could look at that. We, we don't wanna be prohibitive for anybody that's putting the money up front. But, you know, it, it takes quite a bit of work of figuring out how much, how much has been paid, how much people owe, getting the engineering bills, billing out. We've done a lot of work with that and it's, it's, yeah.
But if it costs more than you end up, you bill it?
Yes.
So it's not, the six percent is all we get?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I know that we try to stay in line with other cities, however, other cities are, have other income sources to share the overhead, so don't necessarily mind being a little higher than average for the local area for things like this, in my opinion.
And we really don't have that many areas that we're really gonna be dealing with this too much more. Yeah, we're almost built out. I mean, there's just a few pieces of property that could even be developed that remain, so.
So it may become a moot point.
And I know that the subdivision regulations as a whole are gonna be looked at because I know that there is one area of town where it's one property owner and they've built, I think, five or six homes and they wanna keep splitting it off even a little bit more. And so that's something that we need to try to get ahead of because we, our subdivision regulations just need to be looked at again. So that's something that needs to be done by staff and Planning, Planning Board as well, so something that's on the list of to-dos.
In that regard, just watch it because if we need to go up from six percent, I'm fine with that, you know, whatever makes sense. Any more discussion of council ordinance 2020-4? You have a motion, please?
I move that we enact ordinance, introduce ordinance 2020-4.
Thank you, in a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Is that Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
A motion was made by Mrs. Middlestetter to introduce ordinance 2020-4 and ordinance repealing old Section 1224.01 fees and adopting new Section 1224.01 fees of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code, so seconded by Dr. Van Veldheisen. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you. Resolutions, we have one tonight, Resolution 2020-F. Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes. City of Belbrook, Resolution Number 2020-F is a resolution amending the fees charged for emergency medical transport services. Whereas the City of Belbrook has charged a fee for emergency medical transport fees since 2002, and whereas Section 246.01 of the Belbrook Municipal Code authorizes the city to charge the usual, reasonable, and customary charges currently prevailing in this region for those services. And whereas the city has contracted with AcuMed to bill for emergency medical transport fees and they have provided an annual review of our service rates. And whereas AcuMed has suggested an increase in our mileage fee from the current rate of thirteen dollars per mile to be in line with other federal, state, and local fees. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves that, Section 1, that pursuant to Section 246.01 of the Belbrook Municipal Code, the city manager is hereby authorized to charge fees for emergency medical transport services as follows. And the fees she's allowed to charge are listed and the one this resolution covers is the mileage and the suggestion is to raise it from thirteen to now a sixteen-dollar per mile charge. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
That first we have, I noticed a typo that we should fix before we have, it's totally my fault, but...
Not fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll fix that before we have the final copy. So in, at the end of February, AcuMed, who is our billing company for our EMS services, they did a 2019 account review and on the very front page of the account review, they, they look at our levels of service and then they look at our, look at suggested fees to see if they're in line and are, the only one that they made a recommendation on was the mileage fee. So we were low on that. So it was thirteen dollars and their recommendation was between fourteen fifty and seventeen dollars. So most of our fees have fallen towards the middle of the road with the rest of the table, so that's what Chief Niedhart had proposed, so that's what we went with. So the ordinance for our emergency medical service fees just says that they're, they're dictated by the city manager, so that's why this is a resolution and not an ordinance. So I thought it was important though to, to list out all of the fees and then we only changed the one. So I know that that might be confusing, but there was only one that was changed, so that was the thought behind that.
Do they review our fees each year then?
Yes.
Okay.
Has to be a whole lot more than just mileage and a mileage fee. I mean, IRS gives you, what, fifty-five cents a mile?
Well, I mean, that, there are a lot of things that go into consideration with the mileage because it's, it's the, the vehicle that's being driven, all the equipment that's in it that's being used. I mean, that all takes energy and maintenance and so it's not just the driving of the vehicle, it's all the things that are being operated as the vehicle is driving as well, so. I don't know how they calculate that, but I'm sure that they had some sort of method for that.
Did they give you any comparison, like to Beaver Creek, to Kettering?
No, it just says, suggested fees and it says that they are, ranges based on state, federal, and local insurance carrier fee schedules. So we took that.
And did you say, I mean, the suggestion they gave a range implying that people around us are charging a range? I am guessing, but you're...
Yes.
They review this every year?
Yes.
So it's jumping from thirteen to sixteen?
I don't know what it was last year. I could pull last year's though and look.
Seems like a big jump for thinking about last year to thinking about this year.
And maybe the range last year was, you know, thirteen fifty to sixteen dollars, so the fifty cents wasn't that much of an issue. That's the only thing I can think. It wasn't brought to my attention and this goes straight to the chief, so.
Any more discussion of council Resolution 2020-F? You have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Dr. Van Veldheisen to adopt Resolution 2020-F, a resolution amending the fees charged for emergency, emergency medical transport services, so seconded by Mr. Havens. Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the city manager report.
Okay, so I'll hit some of the easiest items first. There has been a lot of conversation, even back to the comprehensive plan, community discussions about a crosswalk that connects the library and the dairy station because there are so many younger folks that, that cross between those two. So staff looked into this and tried to see if there were any, any regulations that would prohibit us from trying this on a temporary basis. So for the Sugar Maple Festival, Service Director ordered some temporary paint and is gonna stripe a crosswalk and put up a sign that's like what's in the city manager update up in the middle of the crosswalk, so it would actually go on the roadway, just to see how that works out, see if it's used, see how drivers are responding to it, things like that. So we thought that we would try it for a pilot for the Sugar Maple Festival and we have a lot, a lot of increased pedestrian traffic downtown just to kinda see how that works because currently, that's a, that's a very heavily populated area and now that the second Saturday street fairs and things are going on back in the plaza and the library's a popular spot anyways, it's just increasing the foot traffic in that area and the only places to cross are right there at Northwest Street. There's not even a crosswalk down on the other end closer to Dots, which with the Franklin Street Bridge project, there will be a mid-block crossing that's closer to Dots. But still, if anybody is coming from the west, they would have to go all the way, if they were on that side of the road, they would have to go all the way down to Northwest Street to, to cross. So we're gonna give it, we're gonna give it a shot and we're gonna keep an eye on it and see how it's, how it's received and how people respond, both pedestrians and cars, so we'll give that a shot. Let's see.
Can I, you know, object something here?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see it stay in place through the first of June, at least, because I don't know, I forget her name, from the library, they're kicking off their summer reading program and they're going to be giving, anybody who signs up gets a free ice cream cone.
So that's a direct path?
So it's a direct path. And she was asking me what she needed to do to get a safer crosswalk there, so if we could just leave it in place, through Sugar Maple, through the reading program introduction at least, that would give it time to really get a, a good feel.
Okay. We can connect with library staff and, and see how that, how that works out. We'll get exact dates from them and, you know, as long as it seems to be running smoothly, then we could, we could definitely do that. I mean, that's a good, yeah.
Yeah.
My thought is it's probably gonna end up being temper, or I mean, end up being permanent. The State of Ohio, Dr. Van Veldheisen had passed on the email and I've received it from another, several different sources, but the State of Ohio, ODOT has, has made this year a hundred percent funding for their safety projects. So the, the ones that are related to roadways and vehicular traffic are gonna be tied to crashes and accidents and different things like that, but the pedestrian and bikeway projects are not gonna be tied to anything like that. And so some of these smaller projects could be funded very quickly. So they're taken as a first come, first served. So actually Ryan and I met with our engineer today to talk about the Northwest Street project because that would be a good project to have them fund. And then we'd also talked about a couple of other ideas and this one was one of them. Another one that was just off the top of our heads was to try to connect the south side of East Franklin with Sackett Wright because that sidewalk just dead ends and the park is another two properties over or something. So our engineer's gonna ask the question of ODOT as to whether or not we can just give them five different independent projects in town and just call it Belbrook Pedestrian Improvements because all of them would be fairly small projects or if we would have to submit them all on their own. So we're trying to get the answer to that question, but this could be lumped into that as well, so. Because the, the beacons and things like that, if they were to be activated with the lights and stuff like that, they're very expensive. As everybody knows, that one that went in at the landings to get the students across the street, I think that that was thirty thousand dollars and it's, it's very involved and it's very expensive and it's, I wish it was a lot cheaper because we could have a lot better crosswalks, but at thirty thousand dollars each, it's very expensive, so. But it's totally worth it and if we can get it funded a hundred percent, even better. So we've got that.
Melissa?
Yes.
If I may quit, just when you say running smoothly, I presume this is just kinda rule of thumb. I mean, people have stopped, somebody's in the crosswalk, so as long as traffic isn't backing up beyond Main Street or, and you just kinda keep a, keep an eye on it?
Yeah. And just to make sure that the placement is good, that the visibility is good, people are noticing it, you know, should it move back a little bit, should it move forward a little bit? I mean, just paying attention to those before you actually commit. And then if we were to actually commit, it would require, you know, some ramps, the curb cuts, things like that, which, you know, if we can get those fully funded, that would be great to, to make it even better and more accessible for lots of people. Because right now, it's just gonna go from a grassy strip to a grassy strip. I'm not even sure, I don't think that there's curb there. Ryan, is there a curb there? There is curb there?
There's a curb on the library side, but there's a driveway going into the dairy shed.
That's right. But there's the, there's the asphalt curb that's over there. So in order to make that the most accessible, it would have to be cut and things like that once it was permitted. And you don't wanna commit to something like that unless you know that it's in the right spot, so.
So it's, it's a good test.
It's a good test.
Easy to judge and then you got more data to make the decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So is it a legal expectation that if a pedestrian is walking in this new one that we're about to do, that vehicles are supposed to stop?
Yes.
Better look and make sure.
Like, it's, it's the law?
Yeah.
So they'll be cited for it if they're not?
I mean, we're gonna have to really communicate with folks so that they know that it's there. I mean, so we're gonna have to put it in our newsletter and on the website and, you know, push it out on the Facebook site and just, you know, make people really aware that it's there.
It's like sometimes when they change like a traffic sign to, and it's a new pattern, like cities or townships will put up like a warning sign. Any thoughts on something like that?
Yeah, we can definitely talk about that. That's a, that's definitely a good suggestion.
The way it's supposed to work, if you're in a crosswalk at all, you're not supposed to drive across there. Even if somebody has walked past you, you have to wait till they're off the street. That's what it's, if you're within, if pedestrians in the crosswalk, you can't drive across here, period.
I hear you. There's the theory.
(laughing)
Then there's the, I don't care if you're legally right, if you're in the hospital. That's the one I'm trying to avoid.
Well, and we could even, I mean...
Oh, and Melissa, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, I didn't mean to delve deeply. It's just seeing it, I mean, my understanding was, just like it said, it's state law. So just assuming from, people are gonna take a while to get used to it, but I'd fully expect if an officer saw somebody blow across there, they would get cited.
Yeah.
I think your comment about trying to put something in the newsletter, but in the end, I mean, I'm thinking to myself, I can't imagine for a couple people to cross the road that we're ever gonna have a lot of traffic regularly backed up, but, sorry.
And, and maybe I can talk to the chief also and maybe, you know, especially like the after-school time and the really heavy times that the kids are out, you know, maybe, maybe an officer can, can be present down there near the crosswalk, keep an eye on it. It also serves a dual purpose with community engagement and being able to interact with the kids. So there's a number of ways that we could go about this. And plus, if somebody sees the cruiser parked near it, they're, they're gonna pay attention anyways, so.
One of the things too on this Main Street or Franklin Street, people are always diving across the white line to go around somebody, maybe stop or turning. That's, that's an issue.
Yeah. Happened to me tonight on the way here.
Yeah.
It is an issue, which is why it's a huge issue on that bridge because you see that all the time on the bridge. Everybody constantly crosses over that. That's a, yeah, it's a problem.
Oh, the last question I got, the Northwest Street fix, there's a crosswalk there. Are you gonna move one across the street? I mean, that's kinda...
You mean, put it on the gas station side or what are you?
I'm just asking, I, I don't know if that would make sense or, I don't know.
We didn't, we didn't look at moving that one.
Right, when we were looking at the street, but that's supposed to be the entrance to the plaza. That's supposed to be the main entrance, right? So I didn't know if we need to look at the pedestrian traffic.
Oh, you mean a crosswalk across Northwest Street to...
From west, southwest of North, crossing Franklin there, west.
So there is one on the west side?
Right.
But there's not on the east side?
Right.
Which, that's...
I don't know, just have a look at it.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can definitely look at that.
I'd say those two would be really close together.
Yeah.
See how this goes first before you make that decision.
Yeah, because that would be really close to this one, so.
It would be.
It's, it's really the people that are coming from the west, they have to walk so far down and past to get up and around to the other side.
To do it legally.
To do it legally, yes.
I was just, I was just thinking, since they've designated that, that's their new main entrance, I didn't know if it would, we oughta look at some other pedestrians.
Yeah, now, I'm, I'm following now what you're saying because if it were, if it were moved to the other side where all the new sidewalk stuff is going, it's gonna lead them onto the sidewalk that takes them back up Northwest Street versus where it is now. It's... It's on the opposite side of the road that goes into the grass, okay.
Yeah.
I pick it up now, I was having a really hard time visualizing that, but now, yeah, but you're, you're right. Because there's no, there can't be a sidewalk on that other side because that building is way too close and there's not enough grass there, and yeah. That's, that's a good point. Yeah, we can look at that, because there's still, we're still a little bit of ways away, especially if we want to try to go out for, uh, some of this ODOT money and pay for that project one hundred percent. It's, so we're gonna be a little bit delayed, but if a little bit of a delay means that we can get it funded a hundred percent, then why not? So, that's, that's the thought behind that.
I just remember going into Yellow Springs, your old stomping ground, and they have these pedestrian crosswalks of several places through town.
Mm-hmm. And people still run across the street all the time though.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, they're, they're still even closer together than what ours are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
General thought was, the existing crosswalk that we're talking about, um, I don't see many cars stopping for people. I see people stopping for cars. So, I'm wondering if we shouldn't get two of these little plastic signs to put in the middle of the road?
Yeah.
To remind them there's two of them there instead of just one new one?
Yeah.
Just to kind of train the brain a little better?
Yeah.
Good idea.
And these'll, Ryan, am I right? If somebody hits one of these, it pops right back up, right? Okay. If somebody hits it really hard, I don't know what'll happen to it, but if somebody bumps it, it should just pop right back up.
When those trucks hit it, it'll be mashed in those containers.
Yeah. Then, maybe after we've purchased three of them, we'll find a new solution. Okay, so, um, the police department has been working through a, uh, recertification process with the Ohio Collaborative. So this was a, um, program that was established by Governor Kasich in, uh, twenty fifteen. And so, what this does is, it's got some standards in different areas and somebody actually comes in and looks at policies by the police department and makes sure that they're all in line and they are able to, um, give them a certification to say that all of those areas, they meet the standards and, um, they don't have any areas where they're deficient or need improvement or anything like that. So that wrapped up and the email was just sent out that they were recertified just, I think, about a week or two ago. So, I know that Lieutenant Carmen worked really hard on that, um, there was a lot of things that he had to pull and provide and somebody actually came on site and looked at all this stuff and they, they did a great job and they were recertified, so that's a good thing. So, not, not every law enforcement agency in the state is certified. A lot of people are still working towards that, because if some people were a little bit farther behind then, they'd have a bit of ways to catch up. But, um, Bellbrook has been, uh, been compliant and they were certified and then recertified, which is good, so.
I don't think that's been out all that long, but I remember when it first came out, there was a lot of places that had issues locally around. We, we went through it pretty good, but it's a good program.
And not everybody has the same resources, so it's, it's, it's a good thing that we did have everything in place and that we weren't too far behind, so.
Yeah.
Good job to the police department for that.
Yeah.
Um, so, let's see, so part-time senior secretary. I know that, again, this is just a discussion item, council asked that I put a couple of things in the packet for them to look at. So I did put the job description that we had, um, because we do have one other senior secretary that's in the service department. So I did put that, um, trying to find it, I did put that job description in there. And then I also, I also had compiled a list of things that this person could help out with in different areas. So, there's accounts payable, human resources, uh, planning and zoning, and then council and boards. I thought that the list was pretty long, I didn't even add anything to it for myself, just because I think that this demonstrates just from the other staff members that there's definitely enough that we could keep somebody busy part-time. So, um, if, if council would like to see anything else, I'm more than happy to provide it. We can continue this discussion, um, for another time also, but I wanted to make sure that the things that council asked for are provided and we can go from there, so.
So you're talking the total cost to be about seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Between the water fund and general fund?
Yes. That sounds right.
One of the things I've asked the city manager to look at is, one of the reasons we need this person is because we're having a lot of requests for public information requests. And one of the things we're gonna try to do, I've asked her to look into this further, we're gonna find a way to somehow post these public information requests on the website. So therefore, if people have a request, they wanna know what's going on, they can easily find out if that request has already been made. I'd like to post the request as it's written and submitted to the city, the response, and then also track how many hours of staff time it takes to put it together. And maybe it'll eliminate some duplication, I don't know, but at least people will see the magnitude of what we get, because some of these requests can take, you know, multiple hours, I mean eighteen, twenty hours, thirty hours, something like that, which is a huge undertaking for Pam who currently does it all right now, and that's kind of where we need a little bit of relief. And it doesn't seem like that's gone less, it's always gone more, but at least if we post everything out there, we're trying to go back and post all the nineteen stuff, then go back and pick up eighteen if we can, and all the twenty-twenty stuff. And that way, if people have requests, they might be able to find something sort of and post it, they could look at that, read that, and save us the time and effort of every day to do it again and go through the motion once again.
Mm-hmm.
So look at it, find out where we go, and I know it entails some website activity and putting things out there, posting and tracking, but I think it's worthwhile.
And it's definitely shed light on some of the organizational, um, issues that we've ran into. I know that when we were looking, um, I don't have an update on the Sable Ridge Kensington Gate stuff. I did put that in my update, that it'll, it'll likely come at the next meeting. We had to look into some things a little bit more, but when, I was going back to look at discussions, because their preliminary plan came in two thousand and then it was changed again in two thousand two, none of the year two thousand stuff was anywhere in the electronic files. So, five verse, no, went back to ninety-three before. Ninety-three to nineteen ninety-nine were there, and two thousand one, the current was there, but no resolutions, no ordinances, no minutes, no nothing from two thousand were there. So we had to go into the archive room and Pam had to dismantle a book to start scanning that's this thick. I mean, that was just, and of course, the thing that I needed was the very first ordinance from two thousand, so it meant that it was in the very back of the book and you have to take everything out to get to it. So I mean, it's just little stuff like that that we run into that, you know, it just takes time. And I'm sure somebody else had noticed that those things were missing, but the time that it takes to go back, locate the book, pull it out, scan everything, refile it and name it, I mean, it takes hours to do that kind of stuff, so. It's just the little things like that, so.
Yeah.
So, um, the, the other thing that I am bringing up, which I know that council probably feels like I'm hitting them with a lock right now, because it, it's, it's just the, it's just the timing of everything, um, unfortunately. I know that we have talked about, at least I've talked individually, I know, um, with council members, about our service department, uh, wages. And specifically, our maintenance worker three position, the last two people that we've hired, it was really brought to my attention just how low that salary was. And so when we hired the first one, um, it was brought to my attention and I said, "We really need to fix this." Well, of course, it kind of went to the back burner because somebody was in the position and then that person left to take a higher-paying job somewhere else. And so we had to hire somebody else and I said, "I really need to look at this." And I, it didn't happen again. And so, um, we, our solution to that was that we started that person out a little bit higher because we knew that that was something that we needed to fix, so we started that person at a, a few steps higher because we knew that that salary was already gonna be a challenge. Um, and now, uh, that person was released from probation and so now we have another opening for a maintenance worker three. So Ryan and I sat down, uh, I think that we sat down for probably, it was the entire morning, um, last week at some point. And we went through, um, I, I had pulled information from, let's see, I, I'd pulled information from all kinds of different places. I had the OML salary survey, I had some salary surveys that were done by Beaver Creek and by Centerville of area, um, service departments. I had asked for updated information from, uh, I got some from Xenia, from Yellow Springs. I was trying to, to pull some that had water departments as well, because with a combination department like we have, they're not only public works and streets, they're also water. And as, uh, Ryan outlined earlier, um, I think it's a department of eight. It's a department of eight and six of them have water licenses. So, um, that kind of makes a compliment, or complicated, because it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison of another, another community that's of similar size, that has their own water department, um, so it's, it's tough. So, what I did was, I gave council a, a salary proposal. I have our current pay scale, which is currently eight steps, and it's five percent in between each step. What we did was we took that down, because Ryan and I looked at this and we thought the eight steps seemed to be too much, because if somebody started out in an entry-level position, by the time that they topped out at Foreman, if they were to work with us the entire time, would take them twenty-eight years if they got an increase in step every year. So we thought that that was, that seemed to be too many steps. So, in looking at other cities and communities, six steps was just about what everybody else did. So, we took it down to six steps with a three percent increase in between each step. So what we did was, after much discussion as to how the right way to go about this was, we, we looked at where our lowest starting wage for our maintenance worker three should be and we settled on it at seventeen seventy-nine. Um, and so, on the back of this page, I have comparisons that I did with some area communities and with their actual titles, which some are different from us. It shows what our current salary is, it shows what their salaries are, minimum and top. Um, so it, it's just some food for thought. I don't, I don't expect, um, council to make any type of a decision on this, but I would like some feedback, just because it's, it's a good time to bring this up, because A, we have a vacancy and B, it's not a super pressing time of year where the snow is coming down. And now that I say that, we're probably gonna get three inches on Sunday, I know that. So, it's a, it's a decent time of year because we're wa, we're going into spring, we're not dealing with snow and ice events, hopefully. Um, they're not dealing with all their mowing and things like that. So, it's a good time to, to bring it up, because I've been putting it off. And so, this was the product of the work that, uh, Ryan and I came up with. So I'm open to feedback, anything else that council would like to see, I'm more than willing to provide it.
So there's expense related to training these individuals and you're saying, "We train them and then they take a job someplace else?"
Mm-hmm. One of the things that I did, I talked to the mayor, um, earlier about this, and he, he brought up a good point, which was, was very prevalent in my mind several months ago, but not as it re- and this actually relates to the, to the senior secretary position as well. So, at council's spot, um, I put this together today because this was a result of the conversation that we had today. This compares, um, our admin actual expenditures and wages and our water actual expenditures and wages from the last several years. And we had a lot of staffing changes between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Um, a lot of people that were topped out and, uh, very highly paid either retired or left and everybody that took their places were lower-paid employees, if not entry-level employees. So, um, if we, if we look at, I mean, I put the twenty-twenty budget in there and as council knows, I'm conservative with those budget figures, so they're not gonna come in that high, I don't ever expect. Um, but that's just what I, I brace for on the conservative side. I think that it was a six percent was what I was budgeting for, for twenty-twenty. But if you look at twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen where a lot of that happened, our, now this isn't benefits, um, this is just wages, because benefits we can't really control the cost of. I mean, we have really great benefits through center for, for local government. But between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, when a lot of these changes happen, our wages in the admin, um, for general fund, the administration department, are down twenty-five percent. And then water are down five percent from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. There wasn't as much turnover, but some of the people that were in administration and water, um, they were paid out of, out of both. But, um, water just has such a bigger budget because a lot of people are charged to water because a lot of people support water. So planning and zoning supports water because of the, the water lines with the subdivisions and the permitting and inspections and stuff like that. So, there's a lot more that's charged to water just because so many individuals that work for the city support the water department directly, so. So for what it's worth, I gave council a lot of information to just think about.
And if we did it this year, we would already be giving them a two-point-seven percent cost of living raise in August.
It was last August.
And then we would give them this roughly three percent increase in the grades.
Which is, yeah, six to seven months later.
So we'd be at the six percent, which is kind of what our budget was based on, so we're not out of whack, but we're not gonna come in a lot lower.
But you, you adjusted all these, I mean, I'm seeing an average, you, some you might have gone higher than others?
It was really just one, one position, one of the positions, um, yeah, one of the positions, I, I took the, I did have a table that had our, our current folks' names and their current step and salary and then where they would fall on the scale, because we wouldn't set them at a, at a salary that was lower. We would set them at the next step that's the closest to where they are.
That was my other question, is nobody loses any money under this?
Nobody would lose anything. There was one employee that would receive a seven percent increase that I think was one of our maintenance worker twos, because those two lower-level positions had to come up a bit. The higher-level positions did not, but the lower-level positions did. And we had one maintenance worker two that would end up, if this proposal were to go through, with a seven percent increase. The rest of them were all two to three percent, so that seven percent kind of skewed things. So, the overall average of increase was three-point-one-seven percent for everybody. And I think that it's also interesting to note, I called over to Sugar Creek to get their salary schedule and, um, one of the, one of the admin staff over there said, "Yeah, I'll send it over to you." And Barry Tiffany must have known that I had just called, and so he called me and he was like, "Actually, we just adopted your salary schedule last night, but your two lower positions, we increased because they were too low for us." So, and they don't have a water department. So, um, their maintenance worker three and their maintenance worker two positions are both higher than ours because they were too low for Sugar Creek as well. So I thought that that was really interesting, that they adopted ours, but they still tweaked it to be higher on the lower end.
They adopted the old one?
Pardon me?
They adopted the old one?
Yes.
The, the one in blue?
With the exception of the two positions, which they increased because they were lower.
Melissa, the scope of work and way the positions are set up, would it make sense to just do away with that lower one?
That's Ryan's call, I know that I had kind of questioned that too, but-
I don't know, I, I'm just asking, because-
Ryan knows how that works much more in terms of bringing people in and getting them up to speed and what makes the most sense. So, I mean, if, if he has a good answer for that, I, I defer to him.
I, I, I'm just asking, I, you know, it's just a thought. Uh, sometimes you get too many, I don't know, grades and everybody does the same work a lot of times. Once everybody's worked together long enough, everybody'll be doing water and street, you know, whatever job at hand comes up. So eventually, everybody's trained in everything.
One thing that I did notice though, is that we actually have a very low number of levels. So we've got the three maintenance workers, Foreman and Director. There were one or two of them that we looked at, there were like twenty different levels.
Really?
It was, I mean, it was really hard to make heads or tails of it in terms of trying to match up. I mean, so, we're actually kind of slim on the, on the tiers and tiers of classifications that we have.
That's good.
Yeah. And I've got all the backup documentation too in, in a folder. So if anybody from council would like to see where I pulled any of this stuff from, I've, I've got it all right here, so.
So the, the proposed pay scale, you're squeezing, from the current pay scale, you're squeezing from eight to six. But, like, if I just pick out randomly Foreman, position one, thirty-four seventy-two, and then, oh, up for the proposed, and Foreman, position one, is twenty-six seventy-nine, it seems like a, a lot more than three-point-one-seven percent increase.
So the difference between, so we can, I can totally run different numbers on overall step increases and percentages of change with the whole table, I can definitely provide that. The way that, the way that we did it, which made sense to me to understand how it's gonna affect our bottom line year to year, was that I looked at the actual employees and what they make now and what they would make with the change. And that was the percent of change. And there was also with this, there was a five percent increase in between each of the steps versus three percent increase between the steps. So, where we have, let's see, eight employees, they would all, if they all increased a step every year, as they do with successful performance evaluations, or unless they're topped out, they all receive a five percent increase from step to step. they all receive a 5% increase from step to step. With the proposed plan, they would only receive a 3% increase from step to step.
From step to step.
Yeah. So, that's, if somebody was hired in at a level one and they went to a level two, it's a 3% increase versus a 5% increase with the larger pay scale that we had before.
So, I follow that now, but, so, it's, how is it not an instant $18,000 raise for foreman position number one to adopt the new pre-pay scale?
It de, it all depends on, and I've, I've, I've got the, the table that shows like what our current foreman makes and where he would go. So, what, where we would place that person. So, let's say that our current foreman is at a five currently, and that pay may closely more match up with the level one. So, we would, we would not immediately put somebody that is a five now with a five in the new pay scale. We would put them at the next step that, or we would put them at the step that is the closest to their current salary.
So, you might have to grade someone from a foreman to a maintenance?
From step, yes. Their, their step may go down, yes.
The step, but I, I think Ernie's, Ernie's asking what I ask you about. I've got no trouble going down to steps, okay? But I'm just looking, okay, your maintenance worker three, they're making 1282, they'll make 1779. That's, you may be 30% more, I mean, kind of whatever. Okay, the foreman goes from 2679 to 3472, is that the same percent? I mean, that's, there, there's a lot here in the collapse and in these numbers that, that's kind of what I was asking is what's the rationale, not who's making what now? If this is going to be the new standard, what, what was it based on?
So, basically, what we did was we started with the maintenance worker three. Where does that, where, where do we think our lowest level employee should start? And then, we took it from there, and it's 3% between each step with a lower number of steps, and the highest step in one position is the first step in the next position. So, that was our rationale. So, we were really overcomplicating this, and so, we just stepped it back. And what we decided to do was, let's figure out where we want to start, and then what makes the most logical sense to take everybody up in a way that makes sense. So, instead of 5% increases, it was 3% increases with less steps. So, each of these steps between one to two to two to three to three to four to four to five, all the way up, if you snaked it all the way up from one position to step one to the next one, it's 3% between each of those. So, that was, that was what we did.
So, I guess, I'm okay on the, the low side. I think that that, I'm following the need for that logic-wise. I guess, I just see, and I'm not trying to pick on any one person, but it kind of explodes on the top side to be, you know, a $12,000 raise instantly. And I'm not sure I understand, if we're focused on getting a maintenance worker three to stay, I can see that. I just see...
Where do you see that big of a...
Well, for instance...
If they put the, if they put the salary of the current salary to the closest new one, that's not a $12,000 raise.
Well, if you do that, you're going to have to take your foreman down to a maintenance worker two. I don't think that that's going to go over too well.
I'm trying to follow that.
But foreman would first stay in the foreman category.
I'm not following. Yeah, foreman would stay in the foreman category, but let's, let's say our current foreman makes, let's see, on the, on the regular scale, let's say that that person makes $33 an hour. On the new scale, they would go to the position number one, which is 3472 is the closest one. So, that's an example.
Their step is going to be different.
Well, what if he's a foreman number one? Then he's going to have to...
We didn't, we didn't have anybody that was going to get a jump like that, to answer your question. We had one person that was going to end up with a 7% increase because it was one of the lower tiered workers. It was a maintenance worker two.
Okay. Well, let me ask it this way, then, not to pick on Ryan here, but I see if he was on the low end, it would be a $10,000 raise. And I'm not saying he's not deserving of that. I just, that's more than 10%.
We didn't have anybody that would be affected that much.
They're going to go to a new step. Their, their step is going to change.
You know, one thing we might be able to do, I don't think, we'll be, we'll see it, we're going to...
These categories are still... Yeah, I could do that. I just, I can, I can block out the names and just put...
Just show us, so we can figure out, look at the numbers and see where it is.
I can do that, because I think that when you look at it that way, it, it, it is helpful.
Okay, but that's, that's, you're looking at it that way, and you've given us a pay scale.
Yep.
So, that's a lot of it there.
Yep.
And then, I think the other question is, okay, I follow your logic raising it up, but I'd also then wonder, does your service director position is a proposed 86 to 109K pay raise? Is that a suitable salary, suitable in the way that you're going to attract good candidates if we need them, okay? And not a, "Holy cow, did you see what Belbrook did? Look what you can get paid there, and all of a sudden, here's a four."
That's the full range. That's not jumping from 86 to 109. That's the full range. There's steps in between there.
Like, if you black out the names and just break it in, you're looking to...
And that's, that's why I wanted to bring it up, is, you know, what, what other things would council like to see? Because Ryan and I stared at this for four hours, and it makes perfect sense to us. You guys are looking at it for the first time, and I understand it brings up questions. And I do have that information as to how it's going to affect the current employees, and I didn't provide it because it had the names attached, and I was worried about, I'll have to think about...
Yeah, that's...
How to better present it, if it makes a little bit sense, yes, yes.
Easier for us to digest.
Yeah.
But we have some...
I don't see a huge big jump.
Well, we haven't spent, we haven't spent anything yet.
We're talking about it. What's that?
I don't see a huge big jump anywhere.
Okay, let's move on.
Longest CM update ever.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Good report. Yeah, get back to us with that schedule. If we can see everybody's going to go, we can kind of put common sense to it and see what's going to happen, to see that we're not going to be doing outrageous increases to the, to the ranking file, and go from there. Any other questions? The city manager report? Good report? For the lower ones? Committee reports? Service?
I think we beat that up pretty good. Thanks, Ryan. That was a great report, though. And some of the other things that need brought up, I'm glad you did. A few, I'll take safety, too. Few things on safety. We just went through time change, check your clocks, smoke detectors. And the other thing, too, I don't know if tornado season ever did leave, but usually, this starts around this time of year. I know we had a bad one in Nashville this week. And one of the things we've talked about, still kind of hashing it out a little bit, is tornado sirens and ways of protecting ourselves from tornadoes and being warned. And that tornado in Asheville was in a night, killed a lot of people, they were in a bed, you know? And one of the, some of the things we've talked about here is weather radios that have warnings next to your bed. They work really great. I've got one, something to think about. And we also have hyper reach. It's on the city website now to connect with that for your cell phone. So, just think of the upcoming weather situations and think about your safety, and then also think about what you would do if you did get hit. You know, there's checklist and stuff that you can retain and try to prepare. And also, think about your pets, and what, what would you do if something happened? And that's one of the things we need to start thinking about, because we sure, we had the example right next to us last Memorial Day, and we, and they're still fixing that, so. Something to think about. Appreciate you, that's all I got.
Good thing for you. Finances loaded?
Um, nothing tonight on finances, and I'm sure more to come after we figure out the salary stuff.
Absolutely. Community affairs?
Thank you. Yes, we have, and the BCA position we have interviewed for, we decided to hold off on naming a person until after we were finished with all the council interviews as well, because there was some crossover, and we wanted to be fair to everyone who had applied. So, that'll be decided next week when we, when we finish the inter, council, council interviews. So, we will be ready to name a person to the BCA. And our Old Village Review Board person will hopefully be here next time for just wearing it. That's all we have right now.
Thank you. Does any member of council have old business? Any new business? Truck route ordinance draft discussion?
So, this was brought up by Councilman Greenwood. And so, council said that they would talk about it, so, so it didn't, didn't just fall by the wayside. We put together a draft just for conversation purposes. So, if council would like for staff to do any specific research in this area, this is, this is just what it would look like if a change like this were to occur, but obviously, it's just a conversation piece, so.
Do a lot of our neighboring cities have these routes in very key strategic areas? Because I'm worried that we've got probably two large vendors that provide a lot of services to Belbrook that use our roadways a lot, and I didn't know if they're going to have a huge impact or if this is something that they see quite a bit in their business. I don't know.
Or have we had any conversations with, with Shur Creek Township or Centerville, which would majorly impact?
Yeah, true.
Yeah, it's going to impact the other cities and definitely impact those two businesses for sure.
I, I think those businesses are doing fairly well and are participants into the community. I would, I would at least propose, they might be accepting of it, because I think it's definitely key to revitalizing downtown, based on the feedback from the recent tour that we gave some developers for food and beverage. But it'd be interesting to see what they would, they would say.
I, I think a discussion would be appropriate.
And we can definitely do that. Just wanted some direction from council as to what, if, how you would like...
Talk to the vendors and talk to Centerville and Shur Creek.
Okay.
I have seen a number of the trucks, I know they're the, coming up the hill on, by the, what is it now, the Dart Building? Not pending it anymore. But they stop at the bottom of the hill before the...
Was it so steep?
So, it's not so steep to start up. I, I, and for the times that I've been down here to see that, I thought, that's pretty smart, to stay down there.
Heavy trucks?
I think they're very heavy, yeah. I think it's appropriate that we extend the conversation to include them.
What's the best way to go about that? Is that something that we would ask the city manager to do? Is it something that we would go in a different route? Would we ask them to come to work session?
I think I, I think it would be appropriate for me to reach out first.
Yeah, I think city manager first is the first step, and then go from there.
And then I could follow back up with council.
There's like, you get the big gravel pit in Spring Valley, those trucks come through sometimes, you know, the business is unfair, there's three trucking outfits there, and it increases every year. And I, you know, if you close it to trucks, where do they go? That's a question.
Yeah.
The, the other thing, if, if for some reason it doesn't go through, can you check weights more often, make sure loads are covered the way they should be? I mean, that's an issue that I can, I can just, you can just see that, flying down through town with dirt flying out of the back of the truck, you know? Like I say, the weight restrictions, they don't get weighed. You know, they're just going from short places, a lot of time, imagine short places. I mean, that's something to look at if it doesn't go through or...
I think by having a conversation with them and letting them know that we're talking about it, they may be able to change some of their behaviors a little bit, may, you know, maybe if it's not necessary, they'll go a different route, you know? I, I don't know, but...
Worth looking into, absolutely.
Definitely worth looking into.
Yeah.
Can you?
Okay. Any more discussion on the truck route ordinance?
I don't think we should abandon, so I definitely think we should...
Oh, yeah.
Increase forward.
Well, I first noticed that I worked as the city manager's office, and the noise that she has on a day-to-day basis with the windows closed is awfully loud.
If we would want a restaurant to have outdoor seating along 725, it's got to change somehow.
It's not going to work.
Okay. Brings us to open discussion of council. Start with Ernie?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, great presentation. Thank you. 290 million gallons of water is pretty impressive. I, I like the idea of the crosswalk. Be interesting to see how that plays out, especially given the fact that the library's giving out free ice cream.
Dairy Shed is giving out free ice cream.
Dairy Shed.
Dairy Shed, after the library.
After the library, so. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. V. Bill Heisman?
Also, Ryan, thank you very much. About 10 years ago at work, I inherited a building that was built in 1949, and I have much more appreciation for infrastructure and what makes it run, and we see what you do here in the team. Stell, thank you.
I'd just like to throw my appreciation out to Ryan and his crew. They do an outstanding job fighting Mother Nature every day. I had an experience this week, I had a building that had a clogged sewer, and you get nervous and you start calling people, and you try to find somebody to get you helped out, and when you have a situation like that, everything is stopped. Now, I got it fixed, but I look back at Ryan and his crew, when you've got a geyser blowing out of a street, people might possibly lose their water. These guys go and take it in stride, get it fixed, get it done, and everything's cool. And I really appreciate that, because it's not easy. It's really not easy, so. Thanks, Ryan. And then, I just have a question for Melissa. When we start doing the signs, temporary signs for the city for different events, are we going to run that through the Old Village Review Board? That was brought up by several people, if we should do that, kind of stay in line with what our business people have to go through?
So, Planning Board had tasked staff with, first priority is to rewrite the sign ordinance as it related to downtown.
Okay.
And one of the things, and Village Review Board was spoken to about this as well, and one of the things that was going to be specifically removed from their purview just by essence of timeliness was the temporary signs, and they had agreed to that. So, usually, when somebody wants to put out a temporary sign, it's for a special or some sort of short-term event, and if the Village Review Board only meets once a month and somebody wants to do it the next weekend, they couldn't do it just because of the times that they meet. So, it would have in the new sign code, I've seen the draft of it, it would have in there what's allowed and, you know, what's not allowed, and if it fits what's allowed, then it would be approved by, by the zoning administrator. And then, so, a lot of that is going to be addressed with the new update to the sign code as it relates to downtown. So, I think it's 1820 is that one.
Because the one thing that people were bringing up, that the city should also have to comply the same as everybody else. That's, that's what the issue was. And I just thought I'd bring it up and ask.
Yep.
Okay.
It's, it's in the, it's in the pipe. I don't know if Planning Board is going to get it at their next meeting, but I've seen the draft, and it's, it's pretty complete. So, I think that it's in the process of being reviewed again with fresh sets of eyes for clarity and things like that, and then it'll go before the Planning Board. So, that was their first priority, was to fix that. And then, it's on to Article 14, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lloyd?
Well, I also thank Ryan for a great job that your crew's do, and I have a particular thank you to him from the garden club, because his crew is awesome about picking up our stuff, pull out of the flower beds and the pots and taking care of it for us, and also hauling the mulch to put down. Makes it easier for our ladies to spread it. And I do want to mention, I had given to Melissa a sample of legislation for outdoor lighting, because with... Because with the new halog, is it not halogen, what are the new kinds?
LED.
LED lights. People are putting lights up that basically light up the night. And starting to hear some complaints about spillover light going into the next door neighbors. Somebody's put up a, up on 725, there's one that's almost like a football stadium height. It's really high up and it's very, very bright. Lights up all the backyards in the surrounding area. So, that's not good for the nighttime. We have nighttime for a good reason. So, there's a sample ordinance from the Dark Sky Organization for us to review and see if it would be something that we could implement here and just kind of help people be a little more thoughtful of what their lights are doing to their neighbors. Shining in your eyes and shining in your windows next door. Brighter lights doesn't necessarily mean you're safer at night. Sometimes it makes it easier for the crooks to see what they're doing rather than for you to be safe, so. And there's statistics in that report about how that works, so. Just want to bring that up. That's something we're looking at.
Thanks, Ryan. Nick?
Thank you, Ryan, to you and your team. You do an awesome job and you have for years. I appreciate it. One other thing, not to be the big alarmist, but coronavirus preparedness. I know that we talked last week, you were going to attend a meeting. I was actually at a meeting this morning with another group I volunteer with for, Montgomery County Public Health Director was there and we talked about some of the things that they were doing. This morning, it wasn't in Ohio, but I think it is now. So, anyway, maybe you can give us an update on what you're doing or what the city plans are, particularly for police and fire, who, you know, may have to deal with it at some point.
So, there's quite a bit of guidance that's coming from Green County Emergency Management, the Green County Health Department, as well as the various state organizations as well. So, I think I sent, Ryan can vouch for this, I think that I sent three emails today just about that alone. So, some of it, one of the things was about EMS providers and how to stay safe. And the other one was for police officers. I mean, it even talked about what you should do if you encounter somebody that you have to take into custody that has coronavirus. So, I mean, there's a lot of information that's floating around and is coming from very, very noteworthy sources. So, when we get that information, we've been sharing it with one another and just keeping an eye on things. But, yeah, it's, it's definitely something that we receive a lot of communications from different area agencies about, so.
Thank you.
A lot of good information out there, so.
Yes, still topic. Ryan, just want to record about some comments about the water report. You know, water is nice, is a great natural resource, but it's also a big part of the financial engine for the city of Bellbrook. So, it's something we will protect and appreciate what you do for us. This time, open the, open the lecture up to open discussion for the audience. State your name, address and your title to three minutes.
Hi, Ms. Cypress, 1942 Sugar Maple Place. So, I was looking through the notes and we were talking about the truck issue in downtown. Something that I noticed about a month ago is there's also a noise ordinance. So, if you can't change the traffic patterns, maybe that's an option that they could implement. Because if the trucks are noisy, perhaps they're violating some of those issues. If you let them know, they'll discontinue that. We talked about crosswalks today and I, I like that idea. My kids do use that also. And if those temporary crosswalks are easy to order and affordable, perhaps we could put one where there's no crosswalk from Ridgeway to the east side of North Main where kids walk to school. And I know that they're not walking a lot now because the weather was bad. But I know at the beginning of the school year, there were a lot of kids coming from Ridgeway. Now, they have to walk, they don't have buses. So, maybe that's an option.
And that's a tough walk because the speed limit goes from 45 to 25 maybe, sort of.
But I do see them. And then, it'll, I think it would help in the spring too because you, as you know, they all walk to Dairy Shed on Friday and they all cross just wherever they can. So, maybe one, as a trial period, could help. And I already mentioned that some other time at some other meeting. And the last thing that I wanted to bring up that I noticed on page three of the manager's report is a comprehensive plan cleanup. And I would like to make the suggestion that when we're already cleaning up the ordinances and resolutions, that some of the errors that are in there pertaining to certain locations are also cleaned up as well. And I believe we've already had that meeting, so that's all I have.
And that's the time to talk about it too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Lou, you shaking your head? Okay.
Appreciate those comments. Ken?
Does any member of council have any other business to come before us this evening?
No, ma'am.
Well, I want to thank Lou, our cameraman, and declare this meeting adjourned.